...to the City of Florisville, City Council Budget Workshop for July the 24th, 6:00 PM at Ignorance 602. Please write for our location and then we will be having our pledge of allegiance. Dear Father and Father God, just thank you for the blessings that you have supplied and given to the City of Florisville. We give you tonight's meeting that will guide us, direct us, and bless this budget workshop. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Texas pride. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. And at this time, I will open the floor to any citizens comments. Any citizens who has a concern or question or anything to address into the council? Okay. If not, we move on to our first discussion, which is on administration. Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Just before we do that, may I have two things I just like to do that I want to make sure everybody has received of this for tonight? I can barely hear you. I'm sorry. Is that better? Not really. Can we turn it up a little bit? I can't. And can y'all hear in the audience? Hopefully before testing, one, two, three. If we can turn it up just a little bit. Is that better? Is that there? We can get closer. Is that better? Yeah. Okay. So I just want to make sure for housekeeping purposes, everybody received a new packet for tonight's meeting. Okay. And then there was, I guess, partial requests from Councilman Johns. You all have that as per his request. And then before the end of the meeting today, if you could pick up your packages, Monica has your packages for you for Thursday's meeting. So we have them here for Thursday's meeting. Okay? It's a full... My slot. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Now, looking at the agenda, the first thing we have is administration. But Mayor, if we're indulging in council, before we have that started, please go to item B, because we have some representatives here from the Lissy group that would like to talk about, and just remind you all of what we provide, our 457B plan for the option retirement benefit. These are options. It is done out of our payroll, but it is optional. And so Mr. Lissy himself... Scott Lissy is here to explain to that. Is that where we go there first, Mayor?
Yes, that is my...
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Lissy with Raymond James Financial, and we oversee the City of Florisville's 457B plan, which is currently established through Nationwide Financial. Okay, everybody hear me okay?
We can. Thank you. Can everybody hear y'all? Okay. Great.
Yeah, the 457B is the city's secondary retirement plan, and as Henrietta mentioned, the contributions are done on a voluntary basis. This plan is secondary to the city's primary retirement plan, which is the pension, and the two are completely separate. Our primary role is to educate the city employees on how the plan works and walk them through the various investment options and choose the ones that make the most sense for them. As of this September, the plan will have been in place two years. There are currently 18 participants and roughly 42,000 assets. Are there any questions?
Um, can you meet with the employees?
So, great question. I'm available on a continuous basis.
Do they know that?
Yes, we have a local office here. As a matter of fact, I met with the gentleman two days ago.
Yes, and so he also comes, and we have open enrollment, which typically happens when, Margaret? In September. We have open enrollment, and he comes and explains the program to staff. We make it a mandatory meeting so everybody can have an opportunity to do so, and he, again, meets with them. But the nice thing is that he is right downtown on C Street, and so if they can come in and go, "I personally have just signed up," and I see him relaxed, just to ask questions and maybe the statements.
Good question. Are there any others?
How is the participation, if I may ask?
Well, we have... So it's a secondary plan, and it is on a voluntary basis. And so to have 18 participants, I think is pretty good on a voluntary basis. And a part of that is because of the education and being available. Oftentimes, when there is not high participation, it's because people just don't know it's available or even how it works. And so for a secondary plan to have 18 participants, I think is very good.
I believe you'll have more participation from the police department. They, some of them didn't sign up the first time, but the second time, they actually had a few. I think it's like four or five that went to sign up, but that open enrollment opportunity had closed. And so we'll do it again in October, and we're hoping that we can grow that participation program.
Do we have a matching part on that?
With the police department, yes, you do.
What is that, 3%, 2%? 3% of...
2%.
Up to max of?
It's 2% of what they participate in. Let's say, for example, somebody decides to put $50 paycheck, we do 2% of that.
So you don't have a cap? They can't put 5,000 in it? You still have to match 2%?
It's, so the contribution, it's dollar for dollar, up to 2% of their annual salary.
Oh, up to 2%, okay.
And the contribution limits are the same for, with the 457, are the same for the 401K, which are currently 18,500. Plus for employees that are over 50, there's an extra amount that they can do.
Can you do that to the city?
No, sir. That is only offered to the police department. It's part of the CBA.
CBA, okay.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Lissy? Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person that we have, so Cap, Michael Scherz, again, from local provider, broker, is Darryl. And Darryl's here to talk about the life events products that he offers to the City of Florisville.
Thank you. But we have to clarify what you just said, because I work for Catholic Life as a general agent, and I don't offer any Catholic Life to the city. I offer Aflac. That is, that is the company that I represent for the city. I try to sneak a few things in there every once in a while with Catholic Life, but, you know, that's business. So first of all, thank you, everybody here, for inviting me here today. It really means a lot. I represent Aflac, but let me just give you a little bit of history about Aflac and why I've been with them for 19 years. They were founded in 1955 by three brothers because they wanted to help people who get sick or hurt, and they've done very well with that. Aflac is the first supplemental company to develop the cancer plan, and that was in 1955, and they're still going strong with that also. They're a Fortune 500 company, which means they're in the top 500 companies with revenues that they report every year. They're the largest supplemental insurance company in the United States. They have over, in excess of over 50 million policies out here in the United States. I don't know how many are in Japan, but they're real big in Japan also. One thing about Aflac, they're known because they pay their claims. If you bring myself the paperwork, we're going to get you a check. Also, the products that I offer, they're all on a voluntary basis. We don't force anybody to buy one of our policies. We offer them. If they want them, you know, they can take them. And let's say somebody's been in the city 10, 15 years. If they own Aflac, when they retire from the city, they can take those policies with them at the same price. You just pay for them in a different manner. What I offer mainly is, our best product out there is our accident policy. It covers, it covers that employee 24/7, on or off the job, cancer insurance. If you're scared of cancer, cancer runs in your family, it's a very popular product also. Short-term disability. That covers a portion of your paycheck in case, you know, you get hurt off the job. We have hospital policies. Now, the hospital policy is like a gap policy. If you have a $1,000 deductible and you have a $1,000 hospital policy and you end up in the hospital, that policy will cover your deductible. And you can go up to, I think, $5,000 or $6,000 deductible on that. So we kind of offer what you also deductible means per year, try to offset some of that. We have heart attack, stroke policies, if that runs in your family. We have dental, we have life insurance and vision if somebody asks for that. We have a few on the books. Also, on your cancer and your accident policy, we offer wellness benefits. So in other words, if you have a cancer policy and it has a wellness on it, which I think most of them do, they go, if that employee gets a cancer screening, a PSA test, or a woman, you know, does a mammogram, you know, we're going to pay them so much money a year, and it has nothing to do with their health insurance wellness at all. We can send them a check, and they can spend it whichever way they want to. And I think, and that's important, we have both of those, the accident and the cancer policy. Okay? And I think the main reason that I've been down with the city for 19 years, we have over, I think it's over 50 or a little over policies with, with the city. And we've held that many policies for several, several years. People don't cancel Aflac. And why is that? Because I'm local. Scott's local, and Mr. Tally's local. If you have some questions, you come to my office, which is downtown, and I'm going to help you file those claims. It's just so important, if you're paying for these policies, we want to make sure that you get a paycheck when that time comes. And again, there's no pressure, and I do appreciate the city, you know, allowing us to come in for that many years. It means a lot. So, okay, now, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
And, Mr. Lissy, do we have like an annual or by a couple of times a year where the employees can meet with the, with Scott or with Mr. Robles? We have a schedule when it's time to sign up, okay? So we have everybody to come and talk about all the benefits and reference what they're going to do with signing at the beginning of the year. And then they meet on their own whenever they need anything going forward. They also work very closely with Margaret Tahada, our HR. If they have any claims or anything in reference to that, they work very closely. But as far as the structure, it happens once a year at open enrollment.
That is correct. And if the city hires a new employee, and I believe the waiting period is 90 days, they, because they're new employees, they can, don't have to wait for the open enrollment.
Right.
Or a marriage or a divorce, they can change coverage.
Yes, so there's other times. So when we have a new employee, we let them know the benefits, and they can go over to his office, as you said, they're downtown on C Street, and sign up. It's whatever products that they care to. Again, this is voluntary, but it is payable deducted, but we want to let you know what we're offering. We will be bringing back to you the health insurance, which uses the health, the dental division, but he did not have those numbers for tonight, and so we'll schedule for him at another time. Any other insurances that you all care to discuss? Okay. Any questions?
Any more questions?
Can I ask a question to Scott?
Sure. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robles.
I was going to ask you, Scott, like, can the employees take off funds from their retirement from the savings?
The, you're saying for those who have already contributed?
Mm-hmm.
If something happened, could they get to the money that's in the plan? So this being a retirement plan, the answer is, is no. They don't have access to it while they're still employed. Now, there are things that say they were to leave the city and go work somewhere else. That's what's referred to as separation of service, and at that point, they could take the money out of the plan and put it in their own retirement account or even just take it. And if they do that, under the age of 59 and a half, they do have a, the IRS doesn't impose a 10% penalty along with the income tax involved. When you really run the numbers, it can be very expensive for someone to get a hold of. They might end up paying 30 or 40 cents on the dollar just to get a hold of $1.
Now, this is a plan that's similar to the 401K that most people are familiar with. Okay, so this is on top of what they normally would have for their IRF. Okay? And so I think the police department started asking for additional funds, and so the council at the time agreed that if they're going to open it up to the police department, they wanted to open it up to all employees to be able to do so. And so this gives an additional retirement that they can do and participate in above and beyond. So it's kind of like our own little 401K, but it's a special number for government entities. What's the number again, Mr. Lissy?
It's a 457B.
457B plan.
AKA 401K.
Sounds like if they would stop working, it would be best just to keep the money there until they turn a certain age?
It's, they have a variety of options available to them. I, they did one I met with a couple of days ago, it was a similar situation, and, you know, they can leave the money in the plan. They can choose to take the money in cash personally, and I let them know that there are taxes and penalties. Or they can choose to take that money and do what's referred to as a rollover, or they move that money just into a personal retirement account with anyone that they choose.
And they would still lose?
No. If they chose that third option, there are no taxes, there are no penalties, they can take the entire amount with them, and everything remains tax-deferred, penalty-free.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other question?
Other question? This is for Connie. How much funds do the city put out for the payment per hearing?
For what, and for this part?
Right. How much funds does...
For the retirement?
Right, for this 457B.
Well, because of the participation right now, it hasn't been...
Right.
A lot of people, what I do, it's implemented into that health insurance piece, that's what we put it in, like specifically to the department. I don't know exactly, but it's not in the thousands.
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You said it wasn't in the thousands?
Not yet.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lissy?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So you said the, Mr. Tally doesn't have the... He doesn't have the numbers, and so he's looking to do, to come back and bring the numbers to staff sometime early August, and then we'll make it on one day shots in August. But he didn't have numbers. We did express that we need to see as many options as we have, even go back and look at Reprofit Shield, and so he's shopping the numbers, and so hopefully we'll have more options, TML, Reprofit Shield, and some other, we have healthcare, some other things that we may have going forward. So we don't have those numbers, but it will, that will come back on another meeting. Then we will go ahead and go back to item A, the administration. Okay, so item A, administration, in your budget, you can look at page 23. Okay. So if you would like to start with yourselves, I did not do goals and objectives for the council, but this is part of your budget as well. So if you want to start with anything for yourselves, it starts there under personnel salaries. For, if you see at the top, it's Mayor and City Council. So that is your budget. If there's anything you want to discuss on page 23, but that's where it starts. Well, I'd like to bring up that, and I spoke with the attorney to see about looking into it. I'd like to defer the money that I get per month back into the city funds to be spent with other employees or, I guess, to other employees. So did you, were you able to find any information?
There are two methods that that can take place, Mayor. First of all, we can either do a charter amendment, which would be time-consuming.
Right.
If not, what you can do, once you get your monthly paycheck, you can go ahead and donate it back to the City of Florisville.
Okay.
Okay, so it is possible, and you can do it.
But it will be counted, my IRS can, if it will be counted as income, even though you donated back? Mm-hmm. So it will be counted as income, just aware. Okay. Yes, hold on, Ms. Moreno?
Yes, there's another option, and we had this happen before. Some of the council had decided to defer their payment, so they actually don't get paid. And that doesn't affect you, because you want to get a 1099 for any funds that you did not receive. And whatever money that you don't want, that you defer, is taken in the general fund, and then it will, at the end of the year, will either go to fund balance or, you know, to fund other, other things.
Have we done that before? Is that, is that a legal process?
We don't, yeah, we've done it before, but we don't find any other things. We just leave it there until the year ends, and then we just follow, it closes, goes to fund balance.
Yes, she's just thinking to where the money would go. So it doesn't say you can say, "I'm going to take the $100 and put it over here in parks or put it over there in the streets." It just rolls over. But what the attorney is trying to say is that per charter, we have to pay. Right. And so then you would have to give it back, and so we just take this thing.
Yeah.
So if you defer it, is that what you're saying, Ms. Moreno, that I would actually get it and then I can just donate it back? Or does it, does it even have to be?
Yes.
They have to?
Honestly, Mayor, I think that because our charter does state, and it does say that the city council shall fix the amount of salary, and then it indicates in the following sentence that it's $100 for the mayor and $75 for council members, then it shall be followed. So it does need to get issued, and then you can donate it back to the city.
Okay.
And I think that that is the proper thing to do in order to be in keeping with our charter.
Okay. That's the intention.
Okay.
Next question concerning salaries.
Yes.
If council wants to pass, like, they gave themselves $200 in money, check, we would have to go to the voters, right, and ask for that?
You would have to do it, if I may respond, just very briefly. You would have to do a charter amendment, and that would entail that you do have to get a charter committee and have several meetings, and then back off some, a new charter, and then put it up to the voters, and it would have to be approved at that time.
Okay. Okay. If no other questions, council, can you look, if you would look on that page, do you see anything that is a concern concerning the Mayor and City Council's budget? Henrietta, would you like to explain if there's any differences or where we're at? Oh, I did not make any changes to this budget that we did before. It has travel and training, whatever training you all choose to do for each place, because I think some people want to join memberships and travel, so it's the same for each and everyone. We did reduce it, I think, by, to go from current year of 1,750 to 1,500. This year, we start some of the TML registrations in this fiscal budget. Next year, TML is going to be in San Antonio, so there won't be as much travel and training and hotel historically when it is in San Antonio. We normally don't stay in hotels. And so there's a small adjustment, but some people like to do it to memberships, and it is definitely your choice. Again, I did not do a goals and objectives for yourselves, as I have done for other departments. If we don't spend all of the, all of it, does it roll over? It just goes to the bottom line at the end of the year. It is part of our goal to have fund balance. And Councilman Lissy?
Two questions. I see in our past history, we had like $6,700. This is, I'm talking about utility phones. 6,700, 57, 4,000. Now we dropped them to 35. Are we, why is our phone was cheaper?
There are lots, some councilmen are not taking phones. Some councilmen don't take a city phone.
Oh, okay.
Some don't take laptops either. I know Councilman Johns has turned his, and you don't take a city phone. Councilman, you don't take a city phone. Right? They, they... Councilman Johns has a city phone. He doesn't have the tablet. The tablet. He turned in the tablet. So that's why we reduced it, because we just, it's not the expense.
What happens next year?
If the next...
People want it?
Then you'll have to make the adjustment, and it may probably be enough out of travel and training to move that.
Okay, so we shouldn't have to change the bottom line?
No, sir.
Because I want to forego the convention to save money. I know that. But next year, you never know.
And that, if you decide to forego the TML, will affect some of this budget here, because we have to do some of the registrations this year, but the travel and training will be out of next year's budget when we actually issue a travel and training, which is next, which is this budget we're talking about right now. But there's a registration fee, and things such as that we have to do for TML. But I think staff has addressed all of those that are deciding to go.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On those TML conferences, do administration goes other than you?
It, sorry, we have had other members to attend the conference. However, this year, when I'm saying this year, I mean this year, not this budget, but this current year, the only staff that will be attending will be myself. Connie normally goes and has gone historically, but she's going to the GFOA conferences this year, so she won't be attending TML. Mindy has gone previously, Mindy Riley, but she will be attending some things that we need to have on the flood mitigation and things that address those issues, so she will not be attending. So bottom line, it would just be myself and whatever councilman decided to go. Any other questions concerning the Mayor and City Council? Okay, then if I could just look through the package a little bit, the City Secretary is in this portion as well. You know what? Let me ask one more question, going back to the Mayor and City Council. On the, on the election, it went down from 21,300 to 15,000. Is there a reason for that, or what are we looking at?
The reason for that is because we did the elections this past year in the county, not in the city, and our expenses went down.
Okay. Do you know where we're currently at on this election, on this year?
No, because it just started.
But that is, on the agenda for Thursday, your attorney has prepared a report to discuss the election process for the November 2018 election. She'll be addressing that, and we can adjust the cost as needed. Okay. Thank you. So the City Secretary is the next in your package, and as you can see, we have a mission statement for her, as well as some of the major goals and objectives. Now, we really want to focus on some of the things that are really kind of new. We want to focus on training the Assistant City Secretary and actions of the office of the City Secretary in her absence, and then also reference to assist in elections. The other thing that's key I want to put out is the implementation of a new record detention policy, which we passed, and we should be able to implement quite well when we move back into our city hall. Bless you. Working, of course, in tandem with the City Council, the Mayor, updates on the city website. So these are the things that we are hoping to do. Some of the things they're going to be seeing quite quickly, actually, next week is the annexation, which is really important, but also in preparation of our zoning map, which is going to P&amp;Z, assistant finalizing the codification. I need to put a check mark behind that one. So those are things that we're hoping to do and complete and accomplish in the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. Okay. If we turn the page?
One question.
Yes, sir.
It's concerning the City Secretary.
Yes, sir.
If Monica's not there, who, who jumps in?
Monica Belice by council. She is the Assistant City Secretary. They have made, I made a recommendation that council can heard, so officially it is Monica Belice that fills in, as she did, I think, a couple of weeks ago when Monica Belice was on vacation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If we go to human resource, which is probably, this is the topic of our meeting tonight, our human resource. Okay, so their mission statement, as you can see, is there. I noticed I need to put the implementation, not implantation, but we've been working on some IT things. They actually worked on those today. We need to review personal files, do personal files to ensure that the I9s are properly certified. I think that was one of the things they mentioned in the audit. We need support, personal recruiting and compiling benefit packages and screening applicants and training. In the new office, in the new city hall, HR has a new location. It's going to have a place, we're going to have several different stations, like a workstation, to allow staff to do training. So her office is going to be a lot larger, but we're going to have some training, because we're going to try to get some online training for the guys. That's really going to be important, to watch safety manuals and safety things that we can do online. TML will have the high-speed internet. Now, they'll have the high-speed internet in the new mobiles when we move them over there to the location, but we need... but we need to be able to get that certification. And I think in Mark's office, it can be like a little library. Also, it will allow people to get online to fill out things and to be able to have, so she'll have a much larger area, but we'll be able to adjust those things. Also, we're also having, uh, things to go on.